Thank you cadets. Mr. Otis O'Neal, roll call please.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz.
Mr. Martino.
Here.
Mr. Otis O'Neal here. Mr. Potts.
Here.
Mr. Raskin.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Podolsky.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here. The procedures for public participation are printed in the inside of the cover of your agenda. If you haven't already done so, we ask that you please sign in in the back. If you would wish to address the board, if you would approach the podium, sign in there as well. State your name and your address for the record and you'll be forwarded three minutes to make your presentation. Under announcements, there's only one agenda edit. We are not having a executive session following our meeting tonight. Is there any public comment?
Mr. Wolf, under agenda edits.
Well, I was telling Mr. Harris that at the Facilities Committee, we are not able to get to the GCA discussion, so we're going to hold that over when Mrs. Podolsky does her report. We're going to, the gentleman from GCA are here and then the board members can ask all the questions and go through the report like we would have in Facilities.
All right, David.
Okay, this evening, we have a Mr. Christopher Winters, who's the Chief of Staff for Representative Tom Calvert-Gerone and President of the National Children's Cancer Consortium. Please come forward, please.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me.
Could you just touch the button here, please? There you go.
All right, wait a minute.
It's off. Oh, you're good.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Christopher Winters. I am Chief of Staff for State Representative Tom Calvert-Gerone. I'm also the President of the NC3 National Children's Cancer Consortium. But more importantly, I'm an advocate. I am the voice for children that we have fighting cancer nationwide. My very good friends, Dunions are here who lost their child, who are a member of your district. But I also am kind of humbled by the historical significance of being here in front of you. This was my elementary school. I had lunch right here. The first time I ever came into contact with children's cancer was right in this building. And that was the Cooper family. Cooper family farm, I think, is a couple miles over that direction. We came to you, we sent you a letter asking for your support. We are trying to make Pennsylvania go gold. We are trying to raise child cancer awareness across this country. Every two minutes, a child is diagnosed with cancer. In your community, you have Dunions who've lost their child and you have many, many others who are facing similar diagnosis or circumstances. There is nobody in this room, principals included, who can't tell you they don't know somebody who lives down here who's fighting cancer. I could tell you that I would have graduated Daniel Boone School District in 1987 and I could tell you that the majority of my class has had family members who passed eight to seven with cancer. We have to change it and the way we change it is fighting for these kids. We are respectfully asking Daniel Boone School Board to pass a proclamation declaring September as Children's Cancer Awareness Month in the school district and to join the county of Berks, the state of Pennsylvania, the city of Redding, Exeter Township, and a variety of other township and school districts in Berks County and go in gold and urging your staff, your students, your families, your businesses to engage in a day of golden awareness on September 29th. Now, what does that mean? We're not asking you to spend any money. We're not asking you to do anything but for one day, put a gold present on your lapel, wear a gold flower, put a gold shirt on, put something that raises awareness and that we are educating our children that are currently coming up that child cancer awareness has to be spread. You spent four cents on a dollar fighting this disease. We have to do more. And in some cases, like Mr. and Mrs. Dunions will tell you, the sentence they got was death. They literally had months since they had one for their child related and he was an incredibly proud boy and he's still inspiring us even today. So again, I respectfully, on behalf of as President of the NC3, but also as Chief of Staff Representative Calvert-Gerone and as a former resident of this district, spending the first 18 years of my life here, I'm asking Daniel Boone School District to help me the way to go gold for the month of September. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just for the board's information, you all have a copy of the resolution that we'll be voting on in our special voting meeting filed with committee, the whole, for that purpose to support the, for toward the cause. Do you want to have your panel come in?
Would you like to come up and speak?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Patrick Dunian. I live in the one and seven slate line, not far from here. My son Eden was three years old when he was diagnosed with what's called DIPG, Diffuse Intrinsic Pancreatic Leukaemia. Medically, they've changed the diagnosis. It's now called a diffuse midline glioma. When he was diagnosed, we were given weeks, maybe a month for him to survive if we did no treatment. With radiation, he gained months. It's the only effective treatment against this particular type of cancer. It slowly robs the child of their ability to walk, their ability to use their arms, their hands, their ability to speak, and eventually swallow and then breathe. It also, in some cases, robs them of their sight, their facial paralysis. Eden received 30 days straight of radiation treatment. That required general anesthesia every day for 30 days. If any of you have ever had a child undergo any kind of procedure, you know that the general anesthesia in children can be a nightmare and he did not take to it well, but we had no choice. After that, there were no options for us. We could try this trial, try that trial, and we did. We chose one that was non-chemo-based in hopes that it made some difference. Ultimately, it didn't and he passed away in August of 2014. We do a lot of, we started Edens Avengers. We raise a lot of money for pediatric cancer research as well as provide financial support to local families, not just in the district, but across the southeastern Pennsylvania and New Jersey. We have a big event coming up in less than three weeks. It's held actually, the starting point is at Pope Church. It's a 5K and it's run through the streets of the West Ridge Development that. There's also Family Fest, tons of activities for the kids. Also, if you're interested, I was on Y102 on a radio interview. If you go to their website, you can hear more about the event, Edens Avengers, and more about DIPG specifically. They posted that as a podcast on their website. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You think we could post a link to that on our website as well?
Yeah, we just need to get the information.
We can do that. We're going to have Mr. McKnight here. Okay. Now, we have Mr. Principal McKnight coming up for a presentation about the high school.
So, Mr. Harris contacted me today to review the conversation that ultimately has spun around about study halls. Where did it begin? Because there are many board members who weren't on at that time and, you know, it's, we started this conversation literally a month before I was on the job back in 2015 and we went through a year and some recommendations were made and it kind of has stagnated on and off again since that time. Every once in a while, it flares up, but it has seemed to take its position mostly in the study hall issue. So, what causes the study halls is a part of this presentation. So, there's a lot of conversation about the enrollment and declining enrollment at that time with the board and what we did, we just went back and got the historical data that essentially the high school has never really decreased. I mean, it's 2006 all the way through now, we're between 150 and, I mean, 1,150 and a couple hundred kids always. It really doesn't go up that. And so, we highlighted that point for everybody. You can see the student-teacher ratio issue. This became part of the conversation at that time because also the concern from the staff was this is going to, you know, we do some kind of actions going to cost jobs. There was a level of trust that is, was not, the trust level is higher today than it was then. I'm about what we would do if the periods were reduced and took study halls out with the staff. I can tell you that's helping greatly to the high school staff. So, the average class size in 2006 was 16 and 1/2. The average class size now is 21.4. We're actually probably around just under 20 right now because we've had, I think, three people come over from middle school part-time, so that's helped offload some of the past ones. And then, we laid out the storyline that we have the largest class enrollment in the 20 mile radius. We, our classes are larger than many high schools' classes. That's still, you know, approximately true today. It's certainly, we're number one or number two consistently. So, conversation went on then around what do we offer? So, currently, we offer, at that time, the conversation was, I think, 24.65. That was at the time period, if you recall, we reduced one of the phys ed teachers at the high school and we came down to 24 and 1/2. According to the state of Pennsylvania, that is what we must do. This is what must happen. Okay? We are substantially above that and maybe that's what we want to be. I'm not always a subscriber to that. More is better. Sometimes deeper is better and you go into greater depth and you're more focused on. But that's a conversation that we've had here over the last three years collectively with the board. I offer staffing options because this surrounded itself originally about should we cut, you know, the biology teacher and the phys ed teacher and how does that work out? So, I always give you guys multiple options and then I take direction from you from those options. So, option A, you can see what they were. That was basically maintain the status quo of what we had in the system. Option B was reducing three teachers because that was the serious conversation at that time, it was about reducing three teachers. It was biology, it was phys ed, and one is escaped, but it was three teachers. C, again, three teachers and you can see the impact, it would raise the class size. And ultimately, there was conversation from the state at that time that they were going to return funding and I, pie in the sky, if they returned funding, you could add five teachers and that would have been able to help us run the program more effectively at the high school. One of the drivers, and there are several drivers to why there are so many study halls at the high school. One of them is that what we can task our staff today. After a while, we run out, we have a lot of courses that were in the course selection, a lot of electives, which therefore create what we call singletons. It's just that one class. When you put a singleton in a high school schedule, okay, let's say AP Physics is one of them and AP Music Theory. And if they end up running one in the afternoon and one in the morning, kids have to select and that's just to freeze their schedule. Schedule becomes more frozen the more singletons you add. And before we came, in effort, an honest effort to reduce the study halls, I think there were a lot of electives offered and that was the conversation kind of before I came on and they added journalism and Shakespeare and literature and those courses. Well, that froze the schedule even more, okay? There's only one section of Shakespeare, you know, in our films, Shakespeare film, so forth and so on. So, we ended up looking at those four options and at that point, no choice, you know, I gave it to you and then the recommendation, nothing came back. You just had that information to make your own decision. Ultimately, we did cut one phys ed job and then that ended up going to, we have phys ed in 11 and 12, which is one time in the cycle, but in 9 to 10, the heavy piece. So, that was the, that's what came out of that. The other big issue that drives that, the schedule, outside of all those singletons or, you know, if we're lucky enough to have two sections or something, is the science lab period. I don't want you to confuse saying that if we reduce the science lab period, we're saying get rid of labs. We're not saying that. What we're saying is that if you roll into the instructional period, then that opens up your schedule because the way labs work is if you have a science class, say biology, and a six-day cycle, it means six days plus one. Well, you can see this like a Tetris if you ever played that game and you were a kid. That Tetris hangs over and then it creates these gaps. So, that becomes a challenge as well. And then, if you have a singleton science that has a lab, you really have a problem. So, that's what we deal with on a consistent basis. I think we are and still are in educational crossroads. If you reduce the elective course teachers, you'll diminish the on-core program, okay? Reducing the core increases average class size. So, that was the conversation at that time. Then, I got in conversation, I think that was Mr. Bailey, wanted to bare bones. What does it take to do bare bones? So, this was bare bones one and we looked at the DC TC and how many kids we had out there and what that was costing and transportation and so forth. Bare bones two, disaggregate AP courses, so they wanted to know what it costs to run an AP course. That's what it actually cost to, you know, for the teacher and the programming going forward currently. At that time, we were at 28 sections. We're at more now. The AP program has blossomed and it's good and I certainly think it's the right thing to do. And with that average teacher salary, at that time, came from Mr. Small's office. So, that's where we set the price point on how you bring a new course on. And the board wanted to fully understand what does it really cost to bring a new course into the school? It's not just textbooks. It's the teacher, it's the, you know, text cost, so there's a host of things that go into it. And then, any other new course, which is what it would cost to disaggregate that piece. Reduction of staff based on 34 courses running under 10. And that was the conversation, we used to have 36 under 10, 34 under 10. And where elementary had scheduling, you can have a fifth grade, you have 150 kids, six teachers, 25 students in a class. High school doesn't work that way, obviously. You have these singletons and it's going to create kind of these unbalanced scenarios that you'll have some classes that have 10 and we now bring all those courses up for you, for your approval. If we did that, the conversation at the time was, well, that'd be easy, remove three or four teachers. If it were an elementary model, that's true, but at the high school, it was not true. You'd have to substantially reduce the programming because of what those teachers teach. The only one would have fought by that point to reduce to a point seven, so. Bare bones four, I brought up the issue of if we reduce the graduation requirements in Daniel Boone to match the state program, you can obviously recalibrate the program and add folks in other positions. Yeah, and that kind of highlights that issue. So, those were all the issues that we took in multiple variables and staffing in the high school model and we said at that time, there needs to be a lot more in-depth study before we just kind of make a random decision. And that's where it ended. And that was April 20, I think, 5th I had up there. And in August, I say August 10th, I believe, was the decision was made to maintain the biology teacher but reduce the phys ed teacher. And that's what came out of all of that. So, what I'm going to show you is the next piece. I think it was important you had that background information before we look at this piece. And that is, excuse me. I'll try to blow it up this way a little bit for you. Okay. So, over here, you see there were, that's segueing then into this conversation about the activity period originally and the seven period, eight period, or nine period a day and what that would look like. And our staffing model, really, even to this day, is best aligned with the eight period day. And so, we had that conversation about what to do, how to bring in an activity period, how to support those ideas. At that time, there was a lot of conversation, but no definitive decision was made for this to work. And you'll see, and I don't mind, I can send these out to the staff board that wasn't here at the time, but I know it's very hard to see here. You can see the length of the periods. The total instructional time here is 450 minutes. We notice which one, that's the teacher contract a day. And you can see that we have lunch for 30 minutes. The student dismissal time is at 2:25, so there's another 30 minutes post-dismissal. It's up down here. Okay. So, if you want with a seven period day, you could have 357 minutes of instructional time because you have more time in class and less transition between periods. Eight period was going to be 353 and the current nine period model is 349 with an activity period. So, that was the background. If we currently, I believe, were around 60 teachers now, okay, we were, or 58, I guess, with the two half, four half times equal to full time. You can, you know, put that model together in the eight period then. But the board collectively have to make a decision, give me a direction. And when you make that decision and any questions that we can answer, when Mrs. Weber's here, we can talk a little bit to the study halls, but in order to reduce study halls substantially, we would have to hire more staff, reduce the number of elevens that we have, courses that we offer, or reduce the number of periods a day. Those are, it's a simple equation, that's what it is. So, you have to make a decision on what you want to do. And when you do, you tell us, we will do that and make it happen. Obviously, I think we are right staff, correctly sized staff for the eight period day. Like, I don't believe if we go to an eight period day, it would actually lead to reducing teachers. I know that was a fear back originally. Well, if you do that, then I don't want to reduce teachers. I did share with Rob and Jim this morning that by comparison, as we were over at Twin Valley looking at their program, 100 less students, 20 more teachers. It's just, it's simple math, just what do you want to do? Okay, that's what I have. Questions for me?
Yes. So, as this relates to study halls, like, this is great context, I think, but it's sort of assuming that the bulk of the study halls are a result of the scheduling issues and the staffing issues as opposed to, we know there's, we have study halls because teachers call out and we can't fill those spots.
It's a separate issue. I mean, I appreciate what you're saying, but that's, and pretty much Rob and Jim have resolved that and now with the new MOU that you guys agreed to, we've had 100% staffing. Very rarely, we had students going to a study hall because we couldn't cover the teacher class.
Right, but I mean, the conversation started with, we're addressing a reoccurring conversation about study halls and I don't know that this is really anything about study halls as much as it is about appropriately staffing and potentially reducing study halls.
My point is, I'm trying to help us all understand what causes the study hall. Now, outside of student selection, which that's another area we spoke about.
What's on you? We talked about that before.
And I think that's our next step. We really want to have more conversations is to survey the community and students because I would say informally and asking kids, half of kids, they're thankful to have them because they have football or cross-country or tennis after school and work and they like to get to work that day. So, there's that issue in there as well. So, I don't know what the number is of students who want them versus don't want them.
I guess my, what I'm driving at is the options don't necessarily have any relationship to study halls. The options are more or less about what's the appropriate level of staffing to eliminate some of the, some of the class issues that you have with, you know.
I think the options do have a correlation to that in that people don't want to give up instructional time, there's a way to have more instructional time, okay? Lab-wise, if we're going to continue to have more labs, okay, then that's going to be continued to do.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like if you're looking at that, I would assume and any logical, you know, your logical deduction would be that that challenge with scheduling would create study halls.
No question.
Right. So, I guess the thing is, is how many study halls? Like, if I do option one, two, or three, like, what's the impact of study halls?
Are we eliminating labs?
Well, you have the options laid out. You provide.
All of those options will eliminate labs and roll the lab, the lab period and roll that into the.
I guess what I'm saying is if, again, aside from the obvious improvements in class size and, you know, being able to have more elective classes filled because we have more staffing, those are obvious benefits, but as it relates to study halls, do we know what each of those options are going to have as an impact in study halls?
They will have the same impact. It's just a matter of how much more instructional time you want to have, okay? So, you can see a seven period day, you'll be in a period longer, you'll have more instructional time in that specific course. So, the impact is going to be, if not reducing them, eliminating, it will reduce them substantially because the schedules will be balanced and nothing will be an overhead. So, I don't want to say it was zero, but it would reduce them.
Well, I think what you're saying is that we reduce or significantly reduce the study halls that are a result of the scheduling issues.
Correct.
As opposed to the other reasons why we have study halls, which is kids flat out elect to have them because they need the time, right? Especially the seniors. I think we saw the data by class and we saw a much higher number of study halls per student at senior level for reasons like they have jobs, they have a higher class load, they've already fulfilled the requirements, et cetera. But, and then, there's the issue of the, I, you know, again, this was before I was on the board, but when I came on, I, one of the early conversations we had was about the callouts and about the inability to fill those classes with subs because of the sub issue. And so, we had parents that come in and actually said, hey, you know, my kid is supposed to have class and they keep having study halls. So, I feel like there's three buckets of study hall issues. One, this is addressing one of them, but we don't really have an understanding of how many of the study halls are related to this versus callouts versus.
And I'm trying to express to you that it's a lot. This is the number one driver. The callout was secondary.
It's not that I don't believe you.
Oh, it's okay.
I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying, when we see those huge numbers of study halls that you presented to us, it would be nice to know, like, I would feel more compelled to dive into these options if I knew that, hey, 80% of the study halls are a result of scheduling. Well, then, that's something to really, we have to really look hard at that.
And I think, you're right.
If kids are scheduling them, well, then, the parents are seeing the schedules, they're obviously okay with it, then there's really not much for us to do about that.
Well, what there is, when I first arrived, before you did, the big issue was, and my wife was one of them, complaining, why does our son have three study halls today? Because we did not have substitute teacher coverage. So, last year and this year, we worked on different requirements for teachers to call out, working with the principals. We have an MOU, you know, the Teachers Union to cover classes. So, once we get that and we have a subservice now, that could supply us with the number of subs that we need. We found the number is right around 10 as well. Once we get more than that, we're in trouble. Keep that number at 10 or below, we have 100% coverage.
Well, that's, right, that's, that's the third bucket again, I'm saying.
Well, that's the first one. The second thing we have to deal with is schedule. And like they're saying, what we're saying is the scheduling creates openings that create nothingness. So, what's happening now is we're looking at filling those openings with things like internships and co-op, yeah, co-ops. So, I know Rob and Preston are going out, looking at different programs. Twin Valley is one that has a great cooperative or internship program, business internship program to fill those gaps. Also, looking at, and we're working with the union now, and this is part of the contract because we didn't have a contract in place. Now, that we do, we've met, I know, one time, I think, maybe more than that, but we've all met to sit down and talk about blended learning. So, those students, when they have an opening in their schedule, wouldn't sit in a study hall, there'd be some sort of active learning going on, some sort of online programming. But right now, we're still just discussing that, trying to figure out what that blending, blended learning program is. He calls it MOOCs, they're called other things, but there's programs online that you can do to, not to sit there and play on your smartphone, but to actually do something productive. And right now, the union has a group, we have a group that we've met already, but we had to wait until the professional contract was done. So, those are the things and also how the classes are scheduled, whether they're eight period, the seven period, nine period. That also relates back to gaps in the schedule which create study halls. So, it's a multiple things. So, we've gotten rid of hopefully, the study halls due to absenteeism. We have coverage and procedures in place. The next thing would be working with the union administration to put together programming that can be done during those little periods and the last part would be scheduling. So, if we can reduce the number of study halls through scheduling, we don't have any more through substitute or non-covered classes. And then, we could add some active learning during those periods of blended learning. Then, that's a win for us.
If I may, Mr. Harris, this has actually nothing to do with absences or substitute teachers. These are scheduled study halls. There seem to be some slides missing. If I remember this presentation from a couple of years ago, you actually showed us what an eight or nine and a seven day schedule would look like. You showed an activity period.
It's right there. It is there. And those little periods, you go up a little bit, that's the ABC, that's seven, that's eight, that's nine, those are the minutes. That's what happens if you add the activities, that's it.
But what you showed is did not include all these study halls.
Well, it didn't have study halls or not have study halls, it's working, like, it didn't have anything period-wise.
All right. You're talking about, and you keep coming back to hiring and we know that's not going to happen, so that to me means if you're going to keep coming back to that, that seems to be you're out instead of changing something. Mr. Harris mentioned, you're working on scheduling. Mr. Harris mentioned, you're working on scheduling. This issue goes back to when Mrs. Torshin was here, superintendent. Why are we just now working on scheduling? Why are we just now working on blended learning? When we talked about this several years ago. Mr. Harris made the comment that scheduling creates nothingness. Sounds like we're doing something wrong with scheduling, man. And the active learning, we had all last year to put this in place, but it seems to be instead, we just went right along with what we've always done.
Couldn't disagree more. You and I always kind of get to this stage, and I will tell you, I didn't say add more staff, I told you that was one of the options before, I know that we're not, I would certainly add more staff, but I didn't offer one time to add more staff tonight, bring that up. I know the realities of our financial situation. What I said was, reduce the number of instructional periods from nine to eight. We have the right-sized staff for that, and get rid of the hangover science lab period. I've never done that, because you've never approved it. If you guys approve it, if you approve one choice, I will do it, and Mrs. Weber and I will build that. Like, you know, we've learned pretty correctly, that we're not just going out and doing things. So, we bring it to you, and if you make a choice, honestly, if you make a choice, we will do it. And then that's where we were three years ago, and that's where we were fifteen months ago, it's the same conversation that we've had consistently around that, but it kind of cycles back around and it falls off. No one said green light, build a schedule without labs, lab periods. So, until that happens, you know, building a master schedule, and, you know, Megan's very good at it, it is a daunting, complex task. You just don't go out and snap out, you know, three or four different master schedules and say, here, take a pick. You have to, you know, it's a lot to investigate, and we should do that, I'm fine with it. Of course, I'm fine with it, I think it would be better for our teachers, I think it would be better for our kids, to have, be in that eight-period day. I said that when I came in the door. You know, I think having the activity period, which we're able to implement in ninth grade, but we can, we could not implement a nine-period day and an activity period, because that's a duty for a teacher, given our staffing model for tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade.
I was sitting on their curriculum committee last year, was this eight-period model resident to the curriculum committee?
It was two years ago. Two years ago, we had that conversation.
Yeah, and we just wanted some more time to see how things fleshed out. One of the problems was substituting, substituting this Mr. working there, that was, I think they're going to address this in little pieces. My son ended up in nine study halls in a six-day cycle, and I was outraged about it, and it had a lot to do with the substitution. So we've pieced, you know, we've taken that piece off, and I think we're in a new place. He wants, I think we need to take a fresh look.
And I think in terms of presenting.
Rather than making a rushed decision two years ago.
Well, in terms of presenting it last year, I mean, as we've been in transition, I mean, things are stabilized, and we can take things on, we were not stabilized.
We're in a fall trend, that's part of the.
Right.
The teacher.
We're talking about block schedule.
We looked at block schedule, and that will reform me, I think, a little bit, but it's a matter of staffing it again.
And I think it still boils down to, I think Mr. Scott said this, do we even know if we have a problem? If, if kids that have four study halls and, and we want the four study halls, is it a problem? If their parents are signing off on it, is it a problem? Is it our job to tell the parent, no, they can have four study halls, they have to have a class? I don't know. So, before we figure out if we need to solve the problem, if there is a problem?
And I think it goes back to the survey, the surveying the high school community parents and students to get a sense, it doesn't mean we do whatever the survey says, it just gives us a sense.
It was clear that each class had a different, it was very, I mean, the numbers were heavily in the senior class, which, you know, to me is, if they give up seniors scheduling them because they need the time. They have sports, they have after-school activities, they have jobs, and they need to get their work done, and they don't have time to do it at ten o'clock at night, then they schedule study halls, because they can still graduate, I get that, and I'm not disagreeing with any of that. I just haven't seen anything to say how much of our, our scheduling, how much of the study halls is a scheduling thing versus an elected thing, versus, you know, if seventy-five percent of them are elected by the kids, well, then, I don't know, this is a different conversation. This is about what the appropriate level of staffing is, and not addressing study hall issues.
But I think, one thing, if I could interject here, is jokingly, now, being on a year or so, I think it's not, I think it's not here, I had to ask, how difficult would it be to hold something for the board members that are registered, for like, scheduling, scheduling for numbers 101, whatever? So they could actually go through and show how a student's schedule is assembled, to understand it more from the nuts on both sides? I mean, because we hear a lot of, like, you know, a schedule creates nothingness, a lab or a full lab, that opens up more opportunities, so you could, you can schedule more classes, you have less, there's all this.
I see, totally right.
But, I mean, then that would help us, and I think aside, now, you know, I was bouncing off of Jim, Mr. Martino had asked about this, I said, well, what's the, what would be the better way to, you know, to actually understand what Mr. McKnight, because it seems like we always get back to this point where it's frustration, frustration, because, at least mine, I think in some cases, we're talking past each other, and I know we got some short timers here, I don't know what the interest is among the members that are here, that if something like that could be arranged, I think would be interesting.
What?
Because otherwise, you know, we're going to be here, you know, another year, two years, and we're going to come back, and we're going to be talking about the same thing, and Mr. McKnight made it pretty clear that, you know, you're looking for some direction. And that would be a recommendation, what would be the best?
Right, sounds like we're getting one. Eight, eight periods?
Well, that's what I believe, but, you know, people want more data and more evidence, I think, to this point.
Well, no, if this was a board full of teachers, I think they'd all agree with what, it'd be an easy conversation, but it isn't. And so, I don't know which one's best.
No problem.
When you start telling me, hey, I think, here's four options, which one do you want? We'll do it. I mean, I can't, I can't see the benefit, the clear benefits of any of them. But you and your teachers and your staff could probably tell us that in short order.
So here's what I would, here's what I hear you saying, like, and these are actual steps, I think, I hear. Get a survey together, get it out, get a sense of where students and families are, that's first. Secondly, I would say, I'll touch with Megan, but I think it would take a good two-hour session for you guys, to sit through a scheduling 101, to give you kind of a global sense of it. You're not going to be able to schedule.
And I, I do have a sense. I said that wouldn't be appropriate for, you know, for me.
So, you guys tell us when that works for you guys, and we'll let you, you know, do that, because it's, just go through each one, you begin the process.
Can I ask one more question on that? Did you have feedback from our teachers about blending the lab into the instructional time, basically?
Um, yeah, I have, and, and.
Because it's like forty less instructional days.
Yeah, they're concerned, they're, they're, I think the science folks certainly, I would say, do not support that model. So, that's when we've had some of the block scheduling conversation with them, so we could present a block of time. So there are more conversations to have around that. But, yeah, they see it as a loss, but other, other staff members see it as a gain, because then everything's fit in, and, so, there's a little, I don't want to say divisive, it's not divisive, it's just, obviously, science is going to add, science is going to add to keep our history.
Would we still be able to meet our critical requirements for that?
I think so.
By standards?
I think, yeah, I mean, many schools do it, so yes, the answer's yes.
To make it simple, we show hands, who would be, if we can get this arranged, who would be interested, besides myself?
Okay, give me a date, and, and, Mr. Harris. Anything else?
Another question.
Yes.
At the last meeting, you were talking about balancing the study halls at forty-five students apiece.
On average, on average.
Where are we?
Um, we had the, we had an eight-four study hall problem, I want to say a period seven, eight, Mr. Smore's reallocated them, so we are closer to that, that number, but we're not exactly on that number. But there definitely has been changes, because one teacher was dealing with seven.
As I said, Mrs. Bites, I am concerned about labs, so I was, I was, I was.
And you said that the high school class size hasn't really diminished in the last like ten years, but I estimated the average class size right now is two ninety, and I thought it was closer to three hundred, haven't we? Were you calling that in a fair way?
Yeah, I mean, to me, you're, because we have so.
We're hanging around twelve hundred.
We have ten moving, in, in a month, I mean, it varies, so, over, we're three oh five more than that, so two ninety.
We're at eleven fifty right now.
Correct.
And you're saying we've been hovering, we're at one hundred?
We're at eleven fifty and twelve hundred for thirteen years.
All right. I'll give you that one.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
Can you hit that power on there?
Yes.
I think the goal out of this is, you know, obviously, there is changeover in administration, you know, won't be able to read my agenda for a couple of minutes. And we were afraid that, like Mrs. Bites had mentioned, we were, didn't want to put too much on the administration at the high school right away, but I think, I think we owe it to them to make a decision, you know, hear what their recommendation is, try to understand to the best of we can, as we're not professionals, to understand how a schedule goes together, what the ramifications is, wait for the recommendation, then make a decision, and then give them clear direction and move forward. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to finance. Any, any discussion along any of the items listed under finance? Hearing none, I'm, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Potts.
We're still, we're, okay, we're still in discussion with the joint committee on Pepsi. There still is concern with products, pricing is going to increase, the management for the joint committee to, and then other, other groups to manage and control it. So, I guess I'll, I'll leave it back for now, and we'll come back.
Mr. Potts, just to give a little more insight there, to ask for more insight there. Are we in a position where we think that in two weeks, we'll have enough information to be able to vote on this, is that?
It's up to the extracurricular. We need to work out the details of their various levels and structure that they have.
My point is this, I, I understand that the extracurricular committee had to look into some additional stuff that we pointed out last month, right, about pricing and organization and so forth and so on, but for the board to be able to vote on it, we need to actually obtain the information that comes out of whatever sort of investigation there is, and I'm concerned that if we don't, I mean, I don't think this is pressing, but my point is just that, I don't think that, if we don't discuss it now, I don't know how we're going to be able to vote on it in two weeks, if we don't have the information that allows us to kind of evaluate whether this is something that, as a board, we want to move forward with or not. Am I making sense?
I mean, we, I think, one of the larger recommendations I would be looking for is, does the joint operating committee recommend it? I mean, at some point, something like this got to be put back on, you know, Mr. Harris brought him in, brought the idea in, but for you to evaluate it, or J O C to evaluate it and said, yeah, we're comfortable with this, you know.
I know that Mr. Zuber's had some points of interest, he was concerned with, I know the joint committee is, is concerned. I'm not comfortable with it, I don't think a management standpoint, we're quite there yet. I think for the, for the rebate that the joint committee will receive, or the district's going to receive, is that beneficial right now for the extra work and for the other groups on the sports side? So, I mean, I would maybe bring it back. You know, I don't know, I know the district's looking for money, are we going to really, for what we're really going to read from this, I don't think it's going to be beneficial for the groups. We're, we're looking at maybe, what, five, six machines in the students, or in the teacher lounge, maybe one in the gym area. Do we, do we move this back and discuss this? Do we move or discuss this next year? Or do we talk to Pepsi and see if we can remove the concessions off of that contract? Like, you know it stays at all school facilities, so that might, that might be a good point, and they might want to walk away. But I don't want to jeopardize any funds that the district can receive, and also products.
We can speak, we can speak offline with the Pepsi rep, because your level of intricacy was a lot greater than any of us knew, the different levels. So, let's talk to the Pepsi representatives, we could work on the contract and see what happens.
I just don't, I just don't like raising, raising our prices, if we're really going to reduce maybe fifty percent of what the increase is going to be back. I know it's, it's tough for the joint, joint committee now to, to keep their process reasonable to where they can split it between the music and the sports side. It's a minimal fund revenue, but they're, again, it's all the kids.
I think we need to discuss, when Pepsi came in, Coke provided us with no sales data. So, what I need to do is work with you all, and as soon as possible, work on what your sales data is, and then put together a plan.
Can we, can we?
We can pull this off, we can, we can table it off the agenda, you know, for the end of the month, unless you come through with some type of breakthrough.
I, I don't want to just rush, rush that we can come some.
I was, the only reason I was pushing it, and Jim was interested in, you know, of course, all the, all the false sports are in there, you know, everything's in full tilt now, so.
I mean, this would have been better if it comes last spring, and then it was a little bit, then come on this week or so.
Also, our rebate is based on anticipated sales in the buildings, not in concessions. That was not calculated, it was only in the buildings.
So we have, you know, I brought that up, because we do, so.
Yeah, that was only vending machine sales, not stadium sales. That's why I said we could talk offline, but, like I said, there was no sales data.
Okay, any other discussion? Public comment?
Laurel Reno, three sixty-seven, Buck Adelaide, president of the Sports Boosters, talking about the Pepsi contract. What we, what you also need to be aware of is, joint committee does the ball, football home concession. Girls volleyball does their own concession, boys soccer does their own concession, lacrosse does their own concession, boys volleyball does their own concession, basketball does their own concession. Who's going to be in charge of making sure that their inventory is coming from Pepsi? They purchase it, they choose what they're going to use, they choose how much they're going to sell it for, it's not part of joint committee. It's a bigger picture than just having Pepsi products sold at concession stand at a whole football game. Joint committee is not part of that, Sports Boosters is not part of that, that's an individual team item. So there's a lot of discussion that needs to take place to understand how all of these snack bars work within the district, let alone the after-school one that's run by the, I think, various classes, clubs, things like that.
Can I just, is there, is there a possibility that you can, that that stuff can come out of the contract?
That's what I would like to discuss offline.
That's what I can discuss with Mr. McKnight.
Because it just seems to me, yeah, it's hard for us to enforce that. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, presentations by board members? Mr. Opus Neale, is there any secretary corresponds?
No, there is not.
Mr. Ratkeb, BCIU?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, BCIU in August. Several things we're taking care of since we were off in July. We have a new five-year agreement with Antioch with their busing needs. We are switching over, DIU administrative employees, we're using Dell, or I think it's switching now to an HP lease, a lot better terms with them than we're getting with Dell. To the point with conversation about some blended, discussion on how we, maybe business stuff in study halls, we approved the discovery, discovery educational services for streaming video for all of Beres County school districts. We also have a agreement with, let's see here, with the Redding School District, we're providing services and support related to their engineering online learning, the Redding High School students, distributing them to Red Light Academy, summer school, and course recovery programs. Additionally, we had a ton of stuff to vote for for P A K.
Thank you. Mr. Ratkeb, Mercuri and Technology Board Report. I actually took that meeting for Ms. Tardowski. The BCTC meeting was at the East Campus on August twenty-third. The large item of note was the student-built house sold at auction for three hundred and seven thousand, which is slightly over their budgeted amount to reallocate towards buying the materials to build their next project. to build their next project. So they're very happy. It turns out that the person who bought that home, their parents live next door. So I guess it must be word-of-mouth recommendation. There were a lot of presentations by the principals and the facilities director on continuing reorganization of the discipline clusters, meaning that like for construction includes carpentry, masonry, electrical, those are all building trades. They used to be located around the building, now they're clustered in the same wing and they're starting to move those all together so they can have more of a collaborative environment between them. You also see the healthcare, medical dentistry, all that kind of stuff also being clustered. They talked about student data from this past year, in addition to attendance, our attendance this year is actually up. And the last item was the professional negotiations have begun with their teaching staff. Their contract runs out at the end of '18. So, anybody have any questions?
Do you know what the basis was in that house? Did I miss that? You said 307,000.
307,000 is what it sold for. It was just over, it was 305,000 was the...
Materials?
No, the appraisal on the audit.
Do we know what we had in terms of materials?
No, I don't know what they actually put in as far as the materials, but whatever the budget was, this 307,000 was over that amount so they could begin breaking ground on the next building, which is always their goal.
Thank you.
Thank you, good question. Any student government report? Legislative report, Mr. Martino?
Yes, Mr. Wolf. With a constitutionally mandated balanced budget, more than two months overdue, our legislature is finally returning from a seven-week vacation. At least the State House is returning, but the state doesn't return until next week. And even the House will have done a little today because even after being off seven weeks, today was a travel day. So many, if not most, don't even work a half day. The more than $32 billion budget is still unfunded. The Senate passed a funding bill which instead of controlling spending included many additional taxes on the citizenry of Pennsylvania. Republicans in the House, on the other hand, claim there's more than $70 billion in unused earmarks that can be used to balance the budget without raising taxes. This proposal was technically scheduled to be voted on sometime this week. Should it fail, what happens next is anyone's guess. The governor and other officials have imposed an arbitrary deadline of September 15th, claiming the Commonwealth would be unable to pay bills after that date. What that would mean to public school funding is unclear. In the meantime, our business office should be in the preliminary stages of developing a 2018-19 budget, even though we can't yet be confident of how much revenue we'll receive from the state this year.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Martino. Are there any questions? There are no other reports I'm aware of. Public comment? Seeing none, under personnel, there are several items here that, to be determined, long-term substitute elementary teacher. And we have a business office person that we had to replace that retired. We have some extracurricular people to approve, volunteers, any questions, board comment?
We've had discussions about this baseball coach several times in the past. Does that ever resolve?
Tell them the question we've had.
Yes, he's not working with any other organization. That was discussed.
Can we research that?
Yes.
You know, we have a member of the public that will be up at the microphone in a heartbeat.
I'm aware. He's not working.
I thought he was part of them.
Part of them.
A blue officer.
Right, he's a part of them.
Sure.
All right, any other board comment? Hearing none, public comment? Seeing none, move to programs. Any questions or discussion?
Should I say what I told you?
Yeah.
Okay, under programs, you're going to notice something different from prior years. What you're going to see are a list from F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M of trips that are either overnight out of state that the board has to approve. What I've done this year is asked the principals to get me all the trips that the board has to approve early enough so that they're not the day after the trip has been taken. So any trip usually in this nature is planned months out. So what I asked for was as many trips as they had that were going to be overnight that need to be board-approved. So you'll see some of them, to be determined, to be determined, because we don't know the number of students, but the trip is in May. But it's, for example, is that Penn State, it's overnight, Hershey Lodge overnight, Seven Springs Resort Champion PA overnight, Indoor Color Guard, Wallwood, Georgia, Atlanta. I want to get these out ahead so that we can do these correctly. In doing this, we found some, like for example, the, one group wanted to take the van to Georgia. That's not going to happen, or vans wouldn't make it to Georgia. So they had to find an alternative way of transportation. So that has to be built into their cost. So doing it this far out will help us make sure that it's done correctly.
We get more like the framework of the trip as opposed to...
Yeah, it's pretty much done, except sometimes you may not know the number of students, but it helps them also finalize how they're going to transport, also where the cost is coming from. And it's not done last minute or haphazard where it's rushed, or like I said, the day after they've gone, or it's, the trip is in May, you're getting it April 1st for the first time. So there are a few more that are coming because they weren't really prepared to do this early, but it helps. I wanted any trip before January 1st to be brought on the first agenda and then anything after January 1st, we brought on the first meeting in January. But they submitted early on everything because they had these and then they were pulling them out. So I wanted to get them in front of you before, like I said, it was last minute and it's rushing.
If the LA wants a scatter for the color art resort, where's lies on, I'm happy to share that.
Okay. The only thing that may differ are the tournaments. So say it's TSA where if they move forward in the tournament, it takes them further out. So that's something you'll see going forward, but when that's on here, you'll see it presented that way. Or if it's cheerleading, if they get to one tournament, win the next tournament, then the next tournament, they end up in Miami, that's also going to be on here, saying the potential could be Miami.
Maybe you should comment that on there with the potential for further travel.
Yes. But that's on those organizations. So I just wanted to get ahead of these early and get them before you.
Any board comment? Public comment? Seeing none, move to facilities. Do you want to have the GTA discussion now or will we do your facilities or...
We can do it now. We'll do it then.
Okay. Gentlemen, could you step up into the barrel, please? Unfortunately, we didn't get to our, the GTA discussion when we had our facilities meeting. Apologize for that. Thank you for sticking around. I know some of the board members in a larger conversation have questions, concerns, and I thought, well, since we weren't able to do that, we were going to have our discussion in facilities. You could come back and follow it up in an open meeting. So I'll open up the floor to any board members that have questions or...
Excuse me, I don't know either of your names.
I'm sorry, Jamie, is it the one account manager?
I originally asked about. If you don't know, I am not known for being tactile, so these questions are being blocked. Does GTA want this contract?
Absolutely.
Well, you've had the contract for over a year and you were brought in, I believe in the spring?
About.
To correct the deficiencies of your predecessor.
Correct.
You were here all summer. And yet in the second week of school, I've got reports here that says the high school and even the middle school are dirty. And I don't understand why after GTA having the contract for a year plus, our buildings are dirt, when you battle all summer to clean them.
Some of the issues we're talking about were issues well before GTA started. We're going back years and years of sub that's been waxed over and we are now trying to take out. The corners, for example, is one of the sub that you had trouble with, the dirt in the corners. Well, the wax in the corners has been there, God knows how many years. So as we're scraping, we're trying to get as much as we can done in the amount of time we have.
So 15 months wasn't enough to do that? That's how long you've had the contract?
Oh, absolutely, but that was, that's more of a summer thing, the detailed cleaning, which is one of the changes I'm going to try to make, that we can allow the stuff to be done like during the school year, during breaks, instead of only during the summer.
So after 15 months and now the kids are back in school, when will these buildings be done? I'm going to get a report saying these buildings are clean, the way they should be.
And we're going to start every break, every time the school's closed, we're going to pull people in here into the high school and start correcting some of these issues in a little more ragged pace.
So we have to wait until Thanksgiving and or Christmas?
Oh, no, there's a break coming up soon. Then we'll start. It could be just one day we'll start. There'll be stuff done every weekend if we're allowed.
And your custodians have been brought in and sat down with the contract to show them exactly what their responsibilities are?
They do know their responsibilities.
And at the end of each day, are you checking to see that they fulfill their responsibilities?
What I've done is I've changed my schedule so I can be here later in the afternoon and the evenings. So instead of trying to do an inspection in the morning after people have started coming in the building, maybe, I'm going to do it in the evening and night so I can check up and they will still be here when I do the inspection. So after they've gone through, I'll do an inspection and we'll be able to stay on top of that a little bit.
Are you signing off on those inspections?
Yes.
Mr. Spoh, how long was this contract for?
Three years.
Three years.
This is the second year.
Is there an escape clause that we're not satisfied with performance?
Performance clause.
You know, we'll have a new board being seated in December. That may give you a little extra time, but I would think if these buildings aren't cleaned during the school year, something's going to have to change because the reason we went to an outside contract was A, to save money, and B, because our buildings weren't being cleaned with the situation as it was. You're right that there were problems in the past, but it can't go on forever with people just saying, oh, well. There was one question, and I'm not sure who's responsible for this. There's a hornets nest in the high school?
It's a loss for bee nests, yes.
That's been reported multiple occasions. Who's responsible for taking care of it?
Arilix has been in twice entering the areas.
That's not GTA's responsibility?
No, that's on the school. Arilix has been in multiple times for the nests in the annex area. And they were back in this afternoon again. I think that was the fourth visit.
Thank you. That's the questions I have, but I want you to understand, we are not, and I know other people have told you this, but I wanted you to hear in front of the board, we're not satisfied.
Okay.
And we want to be satisfied, we're not doing this in the future.
I do understand, and we're going to make other changes. I'll place floaters that'll work throughout each building during the day instead of having minimum stuff. And we're going to try to open up a dialogue with the principals or the building administrators so that we can have, just say the building's dirty, and I'll tell you what I need to fix. I need to know exactly what's wrong when someone walks in. So there was an issue with one of the board members came in to one of the events here at the high school. I need to know, you can't just say the building's dirty. I need to know exactly what it is so I can correct or have a chance to correct. And I think people being complacent is what's been going on every year, so if that's what they expect, that's what we want to change. So. Mr. Martino? Timeout. And listen, we didn't just tell you the building's dirty. We do a detailed report, a 40, 50-point report, Miss Spores walks the building, details, explicit details, pencils in the ceiling, dirt on the floor. So the state administrator's going to give you the information categorically wrong. Well, those issues... 100% we're giving you the information. But no, no, we're not talking about the administrators giving us wrong information. We're talking about other reports of parents or board members coming in saying the building's dirty. Now, we're dealing with the stuff that you're getting. You're getting 14 coming for it every week. Oh, yeah, every week, yeah. And I appreciate the feedback, Mrs. Spores, also, is that we can deal with stuff like that when I know the trash wasn't hidden from the night. That I can deal with. I can't deal if I don't know what's wrong.
So my question is, particularly when you bring in a corporation to house for certain things, and one of the things that I think we expect is that GTA would have a detailed method of how to train the employees and maintain current employees up to date with pedal handling and all that stuff. And what I consistently see from the reports I get is questioning about, are they trained properly with this, cleaned up properly with that? So I think my question is, if GTA does have a detailed program, when they hire employees, how they can train, are there videos, are there, do you have a, who handles training employees?
We, I do some stuff at house initially, and then I'll take them out, introduce them to their coworkers, and then we kind of go from there. Normally, what we try to do is get the previous worker, whoever's moving up or moving out or moving on, to train the new employee. If they are not available, there's a senior member in the head of study, for example. He's going to know everything in the building, but I'm always involved also. And then GTA also has the cleaning checklist that is in Spanish also, that is posted everywhere, every new employee gets it, and it's the details on what should be done in the future.
Okay. So is there more to it? I mean, it's great that, you know, that's a good thing that they've got some on the job training on four employees, but what did that do in the end? So now they're getting passed on improper information, you know, to begin with. I mean, is there anything more than the checklist that these folks can, I mean, they get, you know, scheme?
Yes. We have a new employee orientation, and all of our employees go through that list, like you say, proper chemical handling PPE. And then we have a 52-week program that addresses a different topic every week, and we called it a method of week. And that's disseminated, they train on it, they have to sign off on it. Periodically, we have our safety officer that comes in, works with our custodians on different things as far as chemical is concerned. We're going to get it set up so that we can have all of our people at least Ocean 10 certified within a couple of months. So it's an ongoing training process that we have that it never stops.
You know, obviously, in a custodial situation, sometimes turnovers issue and constantly making sure these folks are properly trained. And again, that's why, kind of like, you know, the violence theory, you've got a good training program in place, you bring the employees down, put the speed and make it perform and make it cross-training and everything else, so just making sure you guys are doing what you have and solve a lot of the problems.
Because what we really don't want to get is, you know, pictures or something sent to us by the administrator saying, you know, just like we just received, you know, we're... I hate painting. I think painting is for prisoners with long sentences. I hate painting. But if I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it right because I know by everything I do, my wife's going to look at that, and if I don't have it exactly right, I have to do it over. And some of the pictures that we got, you know, where somebody painted on the switch plate, which means they didn't take the switch plate off to do the painting, or they got wall paint on the ceiling tile, I mean, that's the easiest job there is to paint. I mean, it's boring, it's tedious, but it's the easiest thing there is. And those are the kind of things that it's functional excellence you've got to just focus on, you know, they've got to... focus on, you know, they've got to take ownership of what they're doing.
And that employee did paint four or five of the offices for painting this on us. So I'm not really sure what happened there. We'll correct.
He might have had his glasses on in the other four, because he sure didn't have them, I don't know. I don't mean to make light of it, because it just reflects badly on your company, so.
Yeah, that's something we can easily correct, is we can repaint, cover it, ceiling tiles can be replaced, and that's not an issue, we'll have that completely.
Because, you know, we want our administrators to focus on, you know, the job of education, not like, you know, have, have to worry about what's clean, what's not, what didn't get taken care of. I told them that before. I keep having to follow up and them spending a lot of time doing things that are not supposed to be their core competency, so just help us with that.
That was a favor, so to speak, for the administrators there. That wasn't efficient work order we had, something we talked about that I agreed to that we're going to make sure we correct.
Okay. Just want to say, I mean, my background is facilities and operations. And just like I tell the staff here, whenever they answer the phone or interact with a parent, one of our customers, they're Daniel Boone. You are only known by the work that you do. Every employee that you have is GCA. So them cleaning a floor, cleaning a room, painting a wall, anything, that's GCA. So they, you can't back away from that was a favor. That was GCA painting that room, and that was the outcome. And I saw the room, and it was embarrassing. And I'm not going to hammer you, but one of the things is every employee must realize that works for you, just like I tell all those that work with me, not for me, but with me, they are GCA, just like all of ours are Daniel Boone. And when you're in our buildings, you're Daniel Boone too. Just like our bus drivers are Daniel Boone, our food service people are Daniel Boone, GCA is Daniel Boone. So the work that they, you do represents all of us. So when parents walk into Preston's office in that foyer, they see that, and it's embarrassing. Just like, we want our bus drivers to smile at our students, our food nutrition service people to smile at our students. We're all Daniel Boone. And when someone walks in from an outside, they don't know, oh, that's GCA, or that's Nutrition, Inc., or that's Klein and Rhodes employee. We're all Daniel Boone. So the work that's done is how you're known by us, to us.
I totally agree.
Well, Reginald, Jamie, thank you for sticking around, you know. Do you have any?
Yeah. When we signed the contract, we were told that there would be some type of reporting that goes on to say, you know, here's satisfaction rating from the schools, for each school, the completion of the work orders, the volume of work orders, the cycle time of the work orders, et cetera. Is that happening? And if so, is there, I have not seen any of it. I don't know, I'm on the facilities committee, so I would like to think that we would get copy of that if the administration's not getting it.
We can provide you with data from school do as it makes our work orders. From the custodial side, we use a software called PML to do the management. When we go in, we do our inspections and we track the data. We can actually give you end user access if you would like, where you can just go in at any point in time and pull up the information and see where we're doing our inspections, see where our efficiency is.
I mean, I'm a little bit concerned with who gets it to us, as long as if we have to get access to it to create our own reports, I would assume it's not that difficult to create a summary of, you know, by month, by school, of what work's being done, and how fast, and at what quality level.
We can get that information through Mr. Harris in case.
I think when, I think when we first started with GCA, they said they do something like a, things like a school report card type thing that counts out quarterly or by twice a year. And it basically kind of says, you know, here's how we're performing in this school last, well, here's where the problem areas are. We haven't seen anything like that, other than what I think Casey generates for us. I assume that's who generates the facilities report. So we were told that that's something that is done. So do you guys have that, or just not getting it, or?
We have the monthly report card that we send out at the end of each month. I was just sending a couple of text messages to find out where we were with that and implementation. I was told that it was implemented, but we didn't get back a lot of response. I don't know how accurate that is, but speaking with Jamie, I told him that is something that we will be implementing, starting in September. It's a monthly report card, and it will coincide with either quarterly or semi-annual meetings that we call our JRCs, joint review committee meetings, where we bring together a group of people that, which Harris and Casey decide that they don't have the meeting, and we put together a report, and then we hash out the issues, concerns, complaints from the data that's derived from the report cards.
So can we get historical from that? Like, so you said that you guys were creating, someone told you anyway that it was being created and distributed? So I'd like to see, you know, a year back so that we can see the progress that's been made, because I've been hearing about the progress, and I want to believe that there's progress, but we keep getting, you know.
I'd find it hard to believe that our administrators wouldn't give you feedback immediately. That would be like the first thing that'd come out at the end of every month, so. We'll take your word for it.
Like I said, I was shocked to find out that, because I just got involved here back in May, and I was shocked to find out that we were not disseminating the report cards. That's a tool that we really appreciate when we get feedback, because it keeps us in the know on things, and it doesn't allow things to sit and fester. So we really did that.
Thank you. Any other board questions? Gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to curriculum instruction. Since Mr. Kurtz isn't here, somebody fill in for Mr. Kurtz as far as what was discussed during the committee meeting today?
There were a few items of discussion. Rob, correct me on anything I get wrong, if you would. The first item that we discussed, we had like a thirty-minute presentation from the guidance department on Act 339, which I understand it. Rob, do you want to explain just what?
Yeah, Act 339 is a state mandated plan, it's a guidance plan. They, they? Act 339 is a state mandated guidance plan. We've been working on it for about a year and a half. Our guidance counselors have collaborated with BCIU and surrounding school districts in developing a guidance plan. It has specific measures involved in academic area, social emotional area, and also career development area. And they're also outlines of a systematic program from K to twelve for the school district out from a guidance perspective. What they did in our, in our meeting was to provide an overview of that. Ultimately, the final draft of this will be presented to the COW and has to be approved by the board before the end of the school year.
Thanks, Rob. We also had a discussion, we are in just the fact-finding stage of perhaps having an internship program. Several members of the administration went to Twin Valley, I guess, last week, and had a discussion with the administrators there, because apparently Twin Valley has had a very successful internship program. So it was just a fact-finding endeavor at this point. There are no formal plans to develop this, but the administration's going to continue to work on it, and if they recommend to the curriculum instruction committee that they would like to move forward with it, then we'll have further discussions at that time. And finally, we had a discussion about a program called SMILES, which stands for Senior Motivators in Learning and Education Services. It's a program where you have, it's open to residents who are sixty-two years of age and older and pay residential property taxes. They would have the opportunity to volunteer time in the, in the district in exchange for a $500 reduction in property taxes. So like I said, we just had a very brief discussion of this. At this point, the administration has had a, they have some issues that they need to discuss to determine whether we might move forward with it, whether they're interested in moving forward with it at this time, but the committee was interested in at least allowing the administration to have those conversations.
Mel, this was it. Any questions from Alan?
I have a comment from Mr. Harris. If you consider the SMILES program, I think it's really a ripoff for senior citizens, because what it comes down to is they get a $500 reduction, which comes to about $5 an hour, and that's less than minimum wage. I think it's a terrible program, and it's been tried throughout the state, and seniors quickly sour on it. Just wanted you to be aware of that.
Just the flip side of that, the seniors that I know that are involved in it and do love it, they just love having purpose, it's not really about the money for them. They're actually very wealthy retired former educators and engineers, so there's two sides of it.
I don't have very wealthy friends.
Well.
Because they're all tax too high. Sorry, hadn't read that anywhere. Thank you, Mr. Obesiniel for. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to extracurricular committee. Mr. Rathke?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. I think we can set this aside for the rest of probably the year by, I think, being an ad hoc committee, I don't see there's going to be any to meet again, probably next year to kind of review how things hatched out with fundraising and what the school did as far as sports and how many kids they have participate, et cetera. So I don't think there's going to be any to meet again, and then probably when new work comes in, that can be reconstituted unless someone else feels we need to meet as a committee beforehand, but.
Then we shouldn't, you want a motion at the end of the month to?
Well, it doesn't need to be dissolved, because it still should, they should meet again, but obviously we can do.
Because that was, that was an ad hoc committee. It was created by us for really a year. So if the new board would like to continue that, we can do that, but my recommendation would be to motion that it be dissolved and reconstituted next year. Any other board?
Did we ever get, I was curious how the student activity fee, did we ever get a need on that, the one that Mr. Schmidt, you can pay one fee and get basically admission at any of the events? They had like a student family?
Well, that's one, so that's some of the data that we're going to collect during the year to see how the new fees kind of flesh out.
Not to participate to attend.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, so, you know, see how it goes when you inside, and we have data from last year and how we deal with what the town guesses.
Yeah.
What we can combine that with this year's data to see how kind of attendance we had, and see how it goes by the passes and et cetera, so.
It may be a little off topic, but since it was brought up about fees, that would result in this parking fee issue.
We'll bring that up, we'll discuss that on our new business.
Mr. Rathke, did, please remind me, if you would, did we table the vote on changing the activity?
No, just waiting back.
We did vote on it?
Okay. I'm trying to remember what that was. The new schedule was passed, and the decision was made with regard to money collected at this point, which way did we go? I think money collected so far was the actual new fee. Because the new fee was actually what was, the new fees were put on the website before was approved, and then when I saw that, I yanked that. So anybody that paid had to give the correct current fee. If it didn't pass, then we had to figure out how to go back and charge them more.
Any other board comment? Public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to facilities. Mr. Woski?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Facilities went six fifteen prior to this meeting, and we talked about a couple different things that will be being finalized for next month, including placeable clocks. And a few months back, we had issues with the Nazi clocks, apparently now placeable clocks are having issues and that affects the whole schedule, so please investigate different solutions for that to try to finalize, could be most cost effective. We also talked about the AEC office wall, and we finally recommended, so let's wait Mr. Miller has.
Great wall.
We are, yeah.
The gate, the great wall, Miller.
The board approves the great AEC wall. It was a cost of $7,150 to have that built and applied, or implemented. So that was a recommendation that came out, and then the other recommendation that we are coming out with it, which will be on the voting meeting, would be the camera system at the middle school. If you remember, a year or two ago, we upgraded the software and cameras at high school, and we're looking to do that same thing at the middle school. The cost for that is $33,120. We feel it's important for the administration to have that ability, the majority of the cameras at the middle school are not, you know, working properly, so it's just time for that to be replaced. So that is the recommendation. And then the third thing that we spent quite a bit of time on, and will most likely, well, will come up, I'm not sure at the, at the next meeting or at the full call or next month, but Jim Thompson came and talked to us about the investigation at the, or the, I guess investigatory report that they did at Ernst Borough Elementary into the masonry issues, and he came up with a scope of four key issues, including the two kindergarten remodel, the two kindergarten arc bowl, about repainting of the main, repointing of certain areas of the masonry, especially near the foundation where the, whatever the stuff, the mortar thing, you have been thinking the mortars coming out, and it really should be repointed to stop odor from getting in there and creating more problems. Also investigating movement at the gymnasium where leak angles, and then strategically adding expansion joints in the walls. So he is putting together a cost proposal for the scope of that. He's working with a masonry company that would be coming out, doing some testing and some approval of some of the mortar and looking at things, and then he'll be, he'll be sending us a module to do, it would really be to identify the scope of the construction, including cost estimates by priority and construction delivery method. So from that, then, we would need to decide which projects we wanted to undertake and what the priority would be, and then you have to put together construction contract documents and put that up to bid. But just so you have a potential idea, I think they're probably looking just at that first step of being somewhere in the $30,000 to $40,000 range of everything. The masonry proposal, the draft proposal was about $25,000, and then there'd be more structural engineers and the architects on top of that. So he didn't have that fully completed yet, but we will be getting that in the near future. Any questions?
Just a comment on the middle school cameras. If I read correctly, just recently, Jenny, there was an incident in the halls that the cameras didn't catch.
I have a lot. And the parents know that we have them, so they expect that we're using them, and then they don't work. That obviously makes things difficult.
In the system that Casey's identifying, it's the same one that they put at the high school, so there's the training on one, it's pretty simple. It's pretty simple.
Can I ask a question? How many cameras are there and how many are not functional?
There are 48 total. I cannot give you an exact number, but I know it's less than that actually function. Only one in the cafeteria, for example, is functioning. So anything that happens in the cafeteria, I have to be lucky that it happens in one corner, because otherwise I get nothing.
So would upgrade include upgrading cameras also or just the software and network?
Well, part of that, if I can jump in, was Mr. Blankvill, even correct me if I'm wrong, but when they replaced the head end system at the high school, cameras that were not functioning, actually were functioning, you know, became operational. So there may be, say, half of them at the middle school, maybe you get like five, six that were, the head end was the issue. And we pulled it out and then Mr. Blankvill has planned then to start replacing things as, you know, you can start replacing cameras and plugging them. It's an I P. It's an I P solution. So the system will handle analog, which is, you know, a cable. And it'll handle the I P, which everything's going in that protocol. And that's the way this will be moving everything to an I P base. But at the high school, we want to do that, but you can't do that because the Wi-Fi infrastructure right now apparently needs to be upgraded a little bit or continue Mr. Matt's plan to do more of that because for the one-to-one. So when that infrastructure is completed, then you can start putting cameras that then jump on the network.
Good discussion. Any other board comment? Public comment? Seeing none, finance, Mr. Rathke, since we didn't have a meeting, do you have a report? Okay. Next meeting is still scheduled for October 5th?
As of right now.
Okay. Policy review committee, Mr. Scott?
Next meeting is on the 26th. As you can see, we have made quite a good amount of progress recently in moving some of the policies. We've been operating under sort of a priority level. So we get, PASBA gives us a list of updated policies and some of them are deemed more critical than others. And so we've been focusing on that each month. If you look through the list, you can see other things like insurance and the other concerns earlier about nepotism and the employment policy. And as an example, we had two policies that were conflicting. One that we had changed from what PASBA had recommended and it directly conflicted with a previous policy. So if you look through our policies, it would suggest that you could decide which one you wanted to follow. So we made those consistent. Those were the highlights, we said, focusing on anything that's a big priority for you at the state or from PASBA or from our administration. Is that it? Questions?
And your next meeting is the 25th.
About 25th?
Yeah, it's okay. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to Transportation Committee, Mr. Lucas and Neil.
We did not meet in August. I canceled the August meeting because school hadn't started and I wanted to have the opportunity to have the, you know, a couple weeks of busing information before we met. So the next meeting is actually tomorrow night at 6:00 P. M. here, at which point we'll be discussing issues that we've had to this point here.
Yeah, sorry it wasn't listed on the agenda. We had made mention that it had to be, that you were having your meeting tomorrow. So sorry to make it on here. Any board comment? Seeing none, public comment? Seeing none, old business. We have our meetings to approve, minutes to approve. And then we'll move to 19 new business, which we're going to talk about, the high school parking fees. We would like to lead off on that discussion. I know there's been a lot of discussion about it. We were aware of this last year. Mr. Harrison or McKnight had agreed to do this, so... Just hold background on.
Okay, last year, Principal McKnight came with a suggestion of a number of, I believe, incentives for students for testing and other goodwill gestures within different programs. And one of them was if students, and correct me, jump in, Preston, if the students get proficient in the keystones, that they would have a waiver of their parking fees if applicable. Also with that would be the increased enforcement of parking through Mr. Spores's office in the collection of fees. It seemed that over the years, it may have been lax before Preston came on board. So in researching what was collected and who was parking, also students were, I guess, maybe falsifying parking passes and things, we decided to ramp up the enforcement of that. But on the other side, offer an incentive, if they reached a certain level in their keystone testing, that fee would be waived. So I know the data has been starting to be tracked this year. So Preston, jump in.
Yeah, Jim, pretty much got it on the head. I would say, looking at my email history here, back in April, the teaching staff actually was concerned when the state no longer was wanting to make a graduation requirement, they were hearing kids talk about not really caring about the class. So they spoke with students and came up with 10, nine or 10 incentive ideas, incentivized ideas. Students told them kind of things they were interested in. Before, then went to Jim and Rob. Jim and Rob were uncomfortable with four or five of them. We took those out. The other five or six that remained, free parking was one. Student access, like a kind of a gold pass, they got Disney does that for the Media Resource Center. Exemption from finals or midterms because they were only getting measured. So that's kind of where it came from. Needless to say, the number one choice, and they have all those options, people were totally free to be chosen, is the free parking. So that's where it was.
I think the question really came out to who sent the approval of the board.
And why? Just a revenue issue that never came to the board. I'd really like to know why. Some curriculum issue that never came to the committee, charging for programs, incentivizing program, keystone, which is a program, hard curriculum instructions. Why did that never come in at least in our committee?
Well, let me just add one thing to what this is supposed to say. The parking fees were approved by the board. So that's a board approval fee for somebody to change.
As I recall, I mean, it was last year, I believe it was brought up, but I did not know it had to go through the board for approval. That's my mistake. But when Preston brought it to me for incentives and things to help morale and other things that we thought that, we didn't know how many students this would even affect.
How many students did it?
I believe it was 100?
Probably, yeah, probably around there, a little less maybe.
So do they have a choice of, if they pay, do they have a choice of four things they can change?
It's actually five or six.
Five or six things? And one that's most taken advantage of is the fee?
We wanted to incentivize obviously non-drivers as well. So you had to have some things like my access.
Yeah, there's so many things I would like to incentivize in the district too. How come you have to pick?
I didn't get to pick. I presented an idea to my bosses. That's what I did.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, we can codify this right now with board action to support it or reject it?
I think there isn't a secondary concern here and I think that's why it came after us, is that, well, what about students that had I Ps or have academic challenges? Is there a way that they can, you know, free parking pass? And I don't know what this, I don't know what that is or what it would be, but I think we should compare across the board of students. If that's part of that, if they're unable to attain that goal, can they get that same incentive a different way potentially? And I don't know.
Are there any other incentives that either cost money or save somebody money?
Are there other incentives that cost money, as we said, or save money for students? The going into reduced costs or free costs to get into sporting events? Or other activities, plays, et cetera, things like that? That's not exercise. I don't think we've had one student that's had that choice.
The board approval side, my concern that I raised earlier in the week was that there are kids that will simply not pass. And that is a statistical truth. So, you know, to offer some of those incentives just seems to me like we already know that there's some percentage of the kids that aren't going to get it. So they're not going to get enough. So, you know, aside from the approval aspect of it, I just, if it throws me wrong, you know, this is my personal feeling about it, it just throws me wrong that we're incentivizing a specific group of kids and not all the kids. So, and, you know, again, I, the whole whether or not we approve or not, I mean, we can argue about not every option is financial and therefore didn't need approval, maybe it did, whatever. We can, you know, we can obviously present it next, in our voting meeting and approve or deny it, but I think we should first consider if it's the right thing to do.
I think it leaves us a bit of a...
With the parking fees in general?
Just, like, I don't know. There are kids that aren't going to, they're just not going to pass. And I think if you went around and asked the teachers, they already, we know who they are, and there are reasons why they're not going to pass, and they're not going to get an incentive because they're not going to pass. And so what we're doing is we're basically telling kids who we know can pass and should pass on their own accord, we're going to bait them into doing what they should already do, which is pass the test.
Better run it briefly at least.
It doesn't make sense to me. It's like, you know, the kids should know they should do the right thing, their parents should know they should do the right thing. Why do I have to give them a prize for doing something they should just be doing? It makes, it just...
And it seems like such a conflict of interest. Because the S P scores are tied to the people who originated this idea. Their own scores are tied to how well the children do on this.
I get that part of it. I do. I understand.
I don't understand.
How well we score on our keystones is a part of, as I recall from Sir Henry's presentation, the teacher rating system, the new teacher rating system. And this suggestion came from the teachers who are rated according to the keystone scores. It reeks. And it should at least be run through legal. So that's hard to do.
I don't necessarily disagree with anything that's been said, but I would like to ask a... Let me play devil's advocate for a minute. The school also offers 10 scholarships to students, which we can, I could probably make the exact same argument that Jeff made about there is a section of the population that we, I can tell you right now, doesn't ever have any opportunity to win that scholarship, but the school district doesn't and it's got the superintendent title in it. I'm not...
I think there's a difference between scholarships. These are waivers, you know? I think it's just semantic.
What, they're both incentives. I don't see how...
Those kids are, those 10 kids, are they going to get the scholarship? They're not getting As and going to good schools because of a $1,000 scholarship or a $2,000 scholarship. That's just, that's icing on the cake for them. It's a little help money, can buy some books. That's a big difference between, we're just flat out taking it, excluding a set of kids we know aren't going to pass that test and rewarding kids for doing something that if they just made a little bit of effort, could pass and take the test and do well.
I'm not disagreeing with the second difference. I'm not at all, but I disagree with your characterization that the first thing is different. The bottom line is the kids who pass the keystones aren't passing the keystones because of parking pass. They're passing because they can pass, right? And in my opinion.
And why incentivize them? Take away.
That's the second portion which I'm not disagreeing with. I'm simply saying, I, unfortunately, it's very hard to have a truly level playing field anywhere about anything. And if, and I'm not insensitive to the issue. I'm not saying that the board should or shouldn't have this. I'm simply trying to say, if we draw a line here, I think there's, I can find examples of similar things that we are doing that it should either call into question or not. But I think we probably do a bunch of similar things. You know, unfortunately, a lot of things that in the world today are already incentivized and those incentives oftentimes don't apply to everyone.
And I would have to defer to Mr. Harrison, but I would assume and hope potentially that, I believe that the superintendent's scholarship is not necessarily just based on academic performance. They can go to kids going to a technical school or, you know, that's not to be their own, it's not surely based on academic. So I think that a child who may not have the highest academics could still be eligible for a scholarship, correct?
Yes.
I think when I was on a scholarship committee, we did look at other fact, all fact. It wasn't, they were the top five or less. It had to go on basically their financial status also. I did look all around. I mean, obviously, we have sports scholarships. Is it fair to a student that may never played sports? But then again, they could turn around and say, you know, I played real football. Maybe they might still not get that scholarship, but they participated in a team sport. They learned a lot more out of that. So yes, there's kids on the fence. We give incentive, they're better off. They might not achieve their goal, but they're a lot better off if they're at least better.
But a waiver is waiving a fee, right? A parking waiver, we're waiving the fee to pay for parking. A scholarship isn't a fee, it's not waiving fees. It's an opportunity for a student to get additional money, supplies, whatever. In my mind, I don't see the connection between waiving fees for some port of origin student body and making, and not even having other parts of the student body be eligible and even have that fee waived. That's just it. If you want this privilege, you must pay for this, or this set of students has potential to get this fee waived. I suppose with a scholarship, it's like there's nothing lost if they don't participate in the scholarship, right? It's not that they didn't, they had to pay anyway. You know what I'm saying? Scholarship is above beyond the offering, right?
Where are the maneuvers? Why aren't we incentivizing people's past history for passing that?
You could, but we don't. I'm not, no one's disputing that, but you could.
Having heard all that. What's our action?
We should put a motion and...
We can amend the special voting meeting if we want to.
See if anything else comes out between now and...
No, no, we're going to be, the special voting meeting is after this meeting.
Well, it would be frozen because they're not taking keystones yet, right? Like, it's not really...
All right, that's another question. When is the, when is the...
It's based on last year's?
There are certain...
Well, they, no, no, they take them three times a year. They're offered three times a year.
Right, but they had paid for the parking permit in August or September when school starts. So if they're, I would assume it's based on...
But it's month to month, they pay for parking if it's month to month, right?
No, one time, one time a year.
Okay, all right, so it's based on last year.
Well, and this also creates the, a similar situation to what we had, that we discussed at the last meeting about activity fees, right? Which is if we've already waived, if the kids were already, if we already sort of had a contract with the kids that said, if you pass, you get parking fee, if it's based on last year's performance, which I'm assuming that it is, then now those kids and those families already think they don't have to pay. So even if we make a change, which I'm fine with, I think for this year, we probably have to stick with that because I believe that that information has been circulated enough that some people are under the impression that they don't have to pay.
And let's be clear, that it's a $10,000 loss of income then? 100 kids at $100? Is that 90, $9,000?
They only, they don't take the license until the time where they don't have to pay, they get it, it depends on...
Maximum is $1,000.
But one of the things also that was done was the enforcement of parking, which wasn't, with this included, was the extra enforcement of the parking that was not done. So we've been looking at the collection rate of that and also the assigning of new tickets, because students were scamming us. So we offered this on the other side.
I think that's good, I think in my mind, it's just two completely different things.
I always have very favor of the parking fee requirement. And I think Mr. Spores is fair to do it this time and force parking, and I think we'll process the forms and hand out, you know, stickers and wet letter. It's something like a Florida town, we have a shortage of parking, and our students are parking in businesses, and we got to cars and everything else. We have plenty of parking.
We always had parking from it, they would, you know, we, even fully charged $30, so it's always...
Let me just go back to the current parking fee, which did stand a lot. And Mr. Harris, this is one more example of action being taken without regard to the board.
It looks bad.
And to Mr. Lucas O'Neil's point, I didn't realize we voted on the activity fees because some people already paid the wrong fee. If we had voted to leave the fees as they were, the district was going to have to go back and collect the difference. Now this promise is made, I guess our word is supposed to be our bond, so if these kids were told that, but we should not be placed in these kind of positions.
I think it, in all honesty, I think it was a rookie mistake from Mr. Harris. So he was, thought it was a great idea, and Mr. McKnight is very persuasive in his arguments, so probably sounded really good. Thought he was like, did a good job.
Look at Dane's getting a wall, so...
Well, when Preston presented this to me with a number of incentives, it was because the Keystone test was being looked upon as irrelevant. And what we tried to do is make sure that there was some excitement around it. And there is such resentment here with all the fees. So what we tried to do is with the high cost of a lot of participation and visiting the sporting events, one of the biggest, and Georgia's in here tonight, is the Dollar Student Night. We packed the arenas because the students really can't afford to do all the events. And I wasn't trying to remove fees or go around the board or anything. And then once it was made clear that we, students with IEPs, I mean, some of them have got the fee waived. It wasn't just because a student has an IEP, doesn't mean they can't learn or achieve. But we never thought it was going to be discriminatory in any way at all. And the moment we talked to Shelley in the special ed department, we were like, okay, let's put a hold on this. What else can we do to open up opportunities for all students? So he wasn't persuading me, it was, it's like, hey, you know what, this test is no longer relevant. Teachers are not financially benefiting from students getting a pass.
And it doesn't affect their rating? Now you're telling me the Keystone scores do not affect our school's...
No, I said the teachers aren't financially, the teachers don't get bonuses.
It affects their ratings, then?
No, the teachers are, they're the teachers, they're not going to teach any less because this test, they're trying to get some buzz and some excitement. When we see these online surveys, that how Daniel Boone ranks just above Reading, those are opinion surveys. And what Preston was trying to do, and I agreed with him, is trying to build some excitement and offer some incentives for goodwill. And I understand the fees are there for a reason. And that's why I said, if we're going to waive, and we didn't know how many would get this, would waive, then we had to make that up on the other side with enforcement.
I have to say, with all due respect, I do, I just quite agree with him, I get it. But the fact that there's lackluster interest in the Keystone is a state problem. I have spent dozens and dozens and dozens of hours going to hearings, going to Harrisburg, out in Westchester, a month ago, fighting the Keystone requirement. That's a state problem. We should not, we should be able to determine our graduation requirement. These Keystone's were on the brink of them going away. It's not our school's responsibility to incentivize them. It's a state problem, as far as I'm concerned.
This is why, the only thing I would say is that the state still keeps in place for IEP or not. They have to pass this test to graduate. And there are some ways in the IEP that you can go through without passing the test, but not that many. And so, on one side, and I'm conflicted about the whole thing in terms of parents, you know, as well, when this came up. I totally respect that.
The parents don't care, they're...
I understand, but if their child doesn't graduate, they're going to care.
No, they'll push Harrisburg with me.
I'm with you. Okay, I won't, I won't...
We need to drop this, we need to get away from this.
But in the short term, kids didn't have to get...
If they fail on logic-based assessments, we need to end this thing, not incentivize it.
Well, we can, we can only control what we can control here. We can only control what we're doing here. And if the administrator, administration came up with an idea to incentivize the kids to take and pass...
See, it's a difference next in the district, I've been working with families, we should have had open discussion about this, about how that...
Nobody, nobody's disagreeing with you. That isn't, that isn't the, the argument at this point, is it's already in place. It's already in place for this, this school year, it's already started with that expectation, like Mr. Martino said. So the question is, what do we do going forward?
Can't you say that they benefited just by passing the Keystone, that we still have to continue with the monetary, hey, we got them passed?
I would want to know how successful it actually was. Well, we know in 2016, we had, we had this many, this percentage passed, and 2017, we had this many pass. Well, can you make a direct correlation between, you know, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, what the, what the actual cost is? Let's have at least the administration bring us the information that they were trying to glean from the, from this process when they thought of it, so...
Can we please have a solicitor review it, before we forward on it at all?
I think that's fair.
They, they even have a solicitor do that.
And I would just say, maybe it's already been done, but I would just ask that we also check, from Mr. Muskowski, that we are giving an opportunity to kids that have IEPs that they may not have to pass the Keystone. I understand what you're saying, I just want to make sure that every child has that, has that opportunity to get an incentive. And if there's some other benchmark that they can use for them, that's used, that's all.
Got that? Yes. Okay. Any other board comment? Public comment? Seeing none, are there any presentations by the public on any issues? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
Second.
We're adjourned, you want to pause that and go to another, I will do this special voting meeting.